Meeting to order. I'll identify commissioners first. And I'll name you wave when you do because people reviewing this thing, if we go in random from where you think you are, you have a different orientation on the screen. So, Nip Tanner. Dana Ovia. Blake Powell. Beth Steele. And I'm Rick Smith and I'm the chairman and that's the five elected commissioners. Larry Dunn is an alternate. And also the co-host of this meeting. So he'll be managing Zoom technology with me for me. And Lynn Marshall may join us also, the other of our alternates who is always in attendance. I need to read this statement on behalf of the governor because it was executive order on the holding of remote meetings. This meeting of the knowing zoning commission will take place through zoom meeting, remote meeting technology. The host of the meeting is Larry Dunn, alternate zoning commission member. My name is Rick Smith. I'm the chairman of the commission. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time. Participants in this meeting will be the commission members and staff persons with applications for architectural design review that have been previously submitted for consideration. We do not have any tonight and the commission's counsel if he joins the meeting. Okay, you got her. All right. At the discretion of the chairman and with the concurrence of the commission, elected alternate members of the commission may participate during old business during discussion of the short term rental issue. That is a rule we have maintained since April. So it's no surprise to anyone. Participants who would like to comment on an item or share a screen item should indicate by either using the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen or by raising your hand visually in front of the screen. Participant will have the opportunity to speak after being called upon by the chairman. Please mute your microphones until called upon. We don't really need to do that as long as there's no background noise that interferes. I'll, I'll tell you if I think it's getting too noisy. Procedurally to offer emotion or second emotion commissioner should physically raise their hand and be acknowledged by the chairman. To vote on a motion will go by a vote of hand showing or the commissioner will call upon members individually. The chairman will, the public can participate in the meeting as observers. And since this is a regular meeting at the start of the meeting during the general comments section of the agenda, which issues that are not on the agenda can be raised for future commission consideration. During that general comments section, a member of the public wishing to speak will be asked to raise his or her hand so that we can figure out who among all the people observing is the potential speaker. Identify yourselves before speaking each time you speak. Members of the public can also submit comments by writing to the commission after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed tonight. Finally, a recording of tonight's meeting will be posted on town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting. That link is in the in the agenda. So you can easily find your way to the recording of this meeting. So that's that. Okay, to the agenda. There is no public hearing tonight. Now, general comments for issues not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to speak on a subject that is not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We have no applications for design review. So we'll move on to approval of minutes. There are two meetings. September 15th and September 29th for us to review. You've got those previously and they have been on the website for all to see. Everybody have comments on the minute? Okay, I have one. Just to bring it to your attention and I'll do it later, but I didn't want to adjust the the matrix that was out on the website prior to the meeting. This is on the last page, the last action motion. In the matrix, we had voted for a consolidation of the objectionable traffic noise congestion and the time of day limits, the noise times. We had voted, motion was to consolidate them together. Have since done that and I'll distribute a new matrix afterwards, but I wanted to let you know that that was something that needed to be done to the document. The motion stands on its own. The other set of meeting minutes is September 29th. Are there any questions, comments, corrections on that one? Other than a minor typo that doesn't affect the outcome, I had nothing. So without objection, we'll call both of those approved. Is there any objection? Okay, seeing none. Both sets of minutes are approved. Next item is the zoning enforcement officers report for September. This was also on the website. Twelve permits issued. You've had a chance to read them. There were no enforcement actions and there are no Z E O enforcement items for the commission. Is there any objection or questions to the Z E O report? Okay, without objection, then we consider that approved. It's approved. Next item, I'd like to take this, the three items that are not short term rental, I'd like to take them in the following order. One of them is old business, the other two are new business. Just to take them in case anybody's here for those reasons, they don't have to sit through all the rest of it. I don't expect any of them to be terribly long. The first one is under old business item A, it's the discussion of the FEMA and knowing rules for remodeling homes. This is that issue of if you remodel and 50%, more than 50% of the act of the cost, the value of the building, not the property, the value of the building. If it's done within a 10 year period, then you have to follow FEMA rules, which means either raising your house if it's lower than the flood limit. Or tearing it down and building a new one that's FEMA compliant. That has been viewed by some as a problem and it's also inconsistent with our surrounding towns. Surrounding towns have one year. Bill has pointed out that there is a possibility people could use one year and get around the system and all that does is cause the US taxpayer dollar, dollars that don't need to be spent. So the question is, if you accept all of that, the 10 years is too long and one years has a problem. I would wonder whether we could just move to have this on the agenda for our well, have a proposal on the agenda for November and, and try and have it for public hearing in December. We need about 65 days. Maximum, but it doesn't have to be 65 days. We could schedule, we could meet the December meeting for a public hearing if we decide tonight what it is we'd like to do. So having said it that way, do people have questions or proposal, or I would float one to see how you feel about it. So questions first, Blake?
So I've got a few questions. I'd like to know more about it. First of all, I thought we were going to have a public workshop first.
Yeah, I jumped ahead of that. When I talked to Bill, he wondered why we needed to do that.
Okay, but I'd like to hear from Bill. That's one of my questions. The background and what the issue is.
Okay.
I'm curious about what exactly the, or which properties exactly we're talking about that this affects.
I think it's any property that the first, the level of the first floor is lower than that flood limit, which I think is 14 feet. It might be 16. Dana went through this and he may have better information than I do.
Right. So I'd like to confirm that. And if we, do we have a map of three properties this affects? And then the other thing I'm unclear of is how this is calculated. So if someone puts a certain investment into their house in year one. In theory, that changes the value of the house. In year two, they do the same thing. That changes the value of the house and three, you know, so I, I, I'm just unclear on how this whole thing is supposed to. So I'd like to hear more from Bill on, on that, but I definitely would like to hear more from some of the people that it affects, you know, or give them the opportunity to, to talk about it.
Okay. Anybody else? We would schedule that for the November meeting for him to discuss it with us. Which means first time we could have a hearing would be January and I'm not against having a public workshop. It just, it seemed to Bill like a simple question, but you raise good questions. So we should certainly hear from him. And then have a hearing December or Jan, well, not December anymore. It would be January or February. So I'll make sure he attends the meeting in November. Unless he can answer some of these things by a staff email. Again, there's no real rush other than as Nick pointed out at the last meeting. You know, we shouldn't let this thing drag on forever. It seems like a good issue to address. So would you like me to just have him attend the November meeting to answer all your questions? Okay, I see a bunch of nods. So let's do that, Nip. Question, Nip, other question or comment on this? No? Okay. All right. So I'll have him attend the November meeting with us. Okay. Next item is, it was listed in the application and it's about as much as I know about it. It's the application of Daco Inc. On behalf of the town of Groton for beach sand nourishment at Esker Point. Requires coastal site plan review and a special exception. Tentatively, it would be set for a hearing in December. And same reasoning, there are agencies that have to be notified. It could be as much as 65 days maximum to schedule a hearing, but in practice, usually it happens in less time than that. It's very similar to the Rim Island Yacht Club parking lot issue we had this summer. It's that same type of process. Coastal site.
Actually had that this before with Esker Point.
About four years ago. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Apparently the sand washes out every three or four years and they have to do it all over, which makes me think I wish they could get a long-term maintenance permit from DEEP and simply notify the agency when they're going to do it again as needed, but I'm sure they've thought of that and got an answer that was sounded very much like no. So consider that. Well, you know, maybe we should suggest it anyway. Okay. So that would be the issue. I have it after talking to Bill that he said we could have the hearing in December. Oh, I know why, because he's going to notify DEEP as a courtesy. It's not legally required for this. But he thinks it's good business to let them know they appreciate the heads up and but apparently they can't brought back and say, no, you have to take 65 days so we can review it. So that's a tentative schedule. The other new business item is the application of Ryan Baller. Before I leave that, any other questions on the Daco one? Okay, I see none. Okay, Lynn?
Yes, I know there's been an issue in the, in the past when they put sand there, it just, it just washes, it goes to east and ends up behind people's houses. And, and all of a sudden they've got a lot of sand there where they once had water. And so they have their docks are all on sand, not in the water. And there, there've been real issues with that. And I know at one point in the past, they were pressed rather than putting more sand there to move that sand back to the beach.
So definitely they would get a notice of the hearing and have the opportunity to speak, but that seems to make a lot of sense is pick it up and move it back there. That's what they do down south when long shore current. Sediment. Yeah. That's a good point though. And, and of course they will have their opportunity to come in the hearing. So anything else? And I identified you Lynn as an expected member before you arrived, but just for the record, Lynn Marshall just spoke. She's an alternate zoning commissioner elected. And she and Larry Dunn participate in the deliberations and debates on short-term rentals and pretty much other issues on the agenda. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, seeing none. Those are the three old business, new business items other than short-term rental issue. So without any objection, we'll move on to that one. Okay, let me propose a course of action for tonight. And then see if there's any objection or we can do it a different way. We have the short matrix, which was a draft decision document dated October 3rd. We have about three items there that need to be straightened out. I would call it that way. And then we have that larger matrix and I believe there are 10 items and the way I did it on the matrix for ease of viewing it as I left the title column on the left highlighted in yellow and then I used yellow to block out the blank block off to the right to show us where we needed to make a decision. So those two documents. We need to go through and clean them up and well, particularly the long document, we have those 10 items to, to discuss and make decisions on. The short matrix is clarifications. And then I put that other one out there. Basically as a suggestion that we consider rethink that not necessarily to change our minds, but to make sure we are comfortable with the decision we made on the time limits. We don't have to do it tonight. We can do it some other night. But those are the three items I'd like to discuss. I would take them in that order unless anybody wants to do it differently. Yep.
Yeah, I'm particularly interested in the parking question. I read the minutes of your last meeting. And it appeared to me that the commission was really struggling to find some rules that they were all comfortable with. And the one that you ended up with, it's not clear to me what, you know, it, it addresses the off-street parking possibility for people who don't have enough onsite parking. But it's not clear to me where you ended up in terms of matching onsite parking with the sleeping capacity of the property. And it seems to me if you don't try and address that, you're likely to end up with cars that aren't on the property.
Yeah, John Casey's advice to us. Let me just find a piece of paper that's there it is. Remind me to get back to Ryan Baller's thing. I neglected to describe that to you and I need to. What we had decided at before the last meeting was to say that you you should park off the street, but if you couldn't park off the street, we would allow you two spots on the street with parking passes on the dashboard. And John said, we can't do that. We have no zoning authority to regulate parking on the street. We can say in whatever legal term we use, you're encouraged or required or preferred to park off the street, but if they go park there anyway. There's nothing we can do about it other than possibly look at the permit as you created congestion or zoning regs say you can't do that. So have a hearing to revoke a permit. That's a little dicey. I don't know that John even commented on that part. I know I'm peeing it up. That's the first question you asked. The other one is where do they park on their own property? And I don't think we really said much about that. So it's ripe for a debate. I mean, some people have said they can only park in a driveway, not on the grass. It's not in there yet. So anybody with a view on that, if you want to take parking first, we can do that. Yep.
It, it seems to me it's only logical that you have some guidelines that Bill would look at in looking at an application that would measure the potential onsite parking against the potential for people and their cars on the property. And if it's a, you know, four bedroom house with you know, parking space for one car on the property. It, it seems to me that's a potential problem. And it ought to be thought through in developing regulations and the regulations written in a way to control that.
When you look at the short matrix, it addresses that in the sense that the applicant must indicate where the parking is expected to can occur. How many spaces are available include limited parking to minimize congestion in advertisements? The debate, which I think was in the minutes, suggested that if they couldn't tell us in the application process, a good place that they could park those cars, we would have a right to deny the permit. Yep.
It seems to me that you're passing the buck to Bill to come up with what he might consider a reasonable balance between bedrooms and onsite parking. And I, I think that creates a can of worms. It's unnecessary. If the commission takes some time and maybe with Bill involved in the dialogue about what kind of guidelines would be appropriate for balancing bedrooms and onsite parking and write them into the regs and then Bill can just apply those guidelines as opposed to him getting into an argument with an applicant with no basis for him to defend whatever he thinks is reasonable.
Hey, do you have a proposal?
I do not. Well, my proposal is that the commission and Bill have some dialogue about and, and take some real world examples. You know, what, you know, what balance between number of bedrooms and onsite parking places that are available to the renters seem appropriate? And I think it would be different for hosted and, and non-hosted. Because presumably in a hosted situation, some of the onsite parking spaces are going to be occupied by the, the owner operator.
Okay, anybody else? I think it would be helpful. Bill's, the nature of his answer on something like this is likely to be, well, what would the commission like to do? And in effect, asking us to develop the policy and he'll tell us how he would do it. That's my guess. If you want, we can just postpone this and if he's on board at the November meeting, we can deal with this issue then. I'd prefer to have other people, you know, cogitate a minute and see if there's, we, in a past draft, we had something in here about this. It was taken out in the motion that ended up being that parking issue. It's on the short matrix now. If you want something back in, that would be better. And then we take it to him and say, is this the way to do it? How would you do it?
One way to do it is to pick up the language that was in the draft that went to the public hearing. There was some fairly specific language about that issue in that draft.
Okay. Do you recall if there was anything from our different language over the course of the summer that you liked better? Or was it the June 2019 graph that you liked? Cause we did have language in here more recently than 15 months ago. And I don't mind going back to that. I just think we're more effective if we take a straw man to the zoning officer or the attorney and say, this is the way we're thinking about it. What do you think? Rather?
For a suggestion, that was the one that I remembered specifically.
The June 2019. All right. Anybody else have anything else on this? Or we'll just postpone more deliberation on it until and I can get that language in and then send it out as a staff draft and you'll have a chance to mull it over.
Lynn's waving her hand.
I can't see her. So okay, Lynn, sorry. I, I again, don't see everybody on this. Now I'm okay.
Move it up to the top. You get more people than if they're along the side.
I had it along the top, but she wasn't showing up. That's why I didn't see her.
It's the right arrow.
Lynn Marshall.
Yeah.
I think we're going to be going around in circles with this. The problem that we get into is that I think a majority of the commission has decided that they want to allow short-term rentals for people who have no parking whatsoever. So what you get into, then you've got these restrictions for people who have some onsite parking. But then we will have none for people who don't have any. So that kind of defies logic. So it's, it is a conundrum about how, why you, that you're not requiring any restrictions for people who don't have any parking onsite, but you're restricting people who do have it onsite. That's where this is getting circular.
Anybody else? Blake?
So I mean, the only reason we're talking about this is as it relates to the goals that we said originally. I mean, the goal was to prevent extra congestion in the streets. Talking about how many bedrooms you have versus parking spots, that doesn't necessarily address congestion in the street. That's the whole issue. There are plenty of parks within the areas within the fire district where you can park in the street. You could have one, two, three, four cars in the, in the street and it wouldn't add to congestion. It's not an issue, but there are other places in the village in particular where one car parked in the street would cause a problem. So, I mean, the way I saw that, what we had talked about at the last meeting was that your application for short-term rental should be very specific about what or how many parking spaces and where they are. And as long as they don't cause congestion, I really don't care how many you have relative to how many bedrooms that you have. If you live at the end of a cul-de-sac, you might be able to have a bunch of parking spots there or on a wide street in parts of Noink. But certainly parts of Pearl Street and other streets that are really narrow where you can't get two cars, two lanes of traffic by, if you park in the street, then that's a problem. So I'm, I agree with Nip in that having something objective would be great for Bill when he's reviewing an application. But I don't know how specific we really can get if we're going to maintain what the real goal is to have to, to prevent congestion because just to say that if you don't have off-street parking, therefore you're allowed some, that immediately goes against the whole objective.
Actually, when I looked at this language and I said there were three things that needed to be cleaned up in that parking section, off-street parking is preferred. I would prefer that to say off-street parking is required. I don't know if that's too militant, but maybe it is because what Blake just said, if there's a place where on-street parking doesn't cause a problem. But the guy has no yard or driveway, then he can't do short-term rental. So maybe that's a problem with that logic, but preferred is not going to be something that can be regulated and enforced. It's suggestive. Anybody else? All right. So Larry. Larry, you're muted.
Unmute.
You gotta start over. You gotta start over. We were talking for a while there.
So I'm not sure there's a difference between what's on the page that you see and other zoning requirements where there's an interpretation. And it comes before, you know, the, the commission on whether to issue a permanent act, there's an issue because none of these things can be defined for every instance. So I think, you know, maybe the question is more not to have Bill provide direction to us, but just say, this is our objective. Can you execute this? And what is the process? Uh, if someone disagrees with whatever position Bill takes. So I think if we, if we focus on the process to implement this objective, rather than trying to come up with a set of words, and I kind of agree with Blake. I don't know how to do that, given all the variables and permutations we have. Would that be a better use of our time?
So give this language with the language from the June nineteen hearing to Bill and say, how would you do this?
What, what would be the process for you to implement this? Yes, this direction. And we can have a discussion on that. He may say, I can't do it. Or, um, it needs to be two parts, one where I, you know, provide an opinion and if somebody disagrees, there's an escalation or, uh, you know, a zoning variation required or something, but I, you know, we, we gotta kind of get to the end. And I think we need to, you know, maybe do it that way. This was the agreed to direction and have Bill tell us how he would implement it. And that'll, that'll answer Art's question. Yep.
Right, Art, nip.
I, I, I think I heard you also say, Rick, that you were going to share with Bill the other language and ask him to opine on both of them.
Yeah, that would be my intention. Cause I didn't see any disagreement with what you said about the June nineteen language.
Which one would he feel more comfortable implementing? I think leaving is not doing him any service.
Yeah. You know, I just said that I didn't hear any disagreement and I forgot that Blake basically had a, a point that suggested that the number of bedrooms is not the relevant point. So I do think we need clarity from the commission. Um, if it's not what's on the page here now, which was our last best motion, then we should have another motion or another suggestion of what it ought to have rather than, you know, fumbling around a little bit and then give it to Bill and say, what do you think? We can always do that. I don't, I just don't know that it's going to be very effective. Dana. Uh, hang on Dana. Yep.
So I have a completely outlandish and contrarian offering, and that is just to leave parking off the document completely. It's not enforceable, number one. This is, this is an issue that we've been talking about and talking about and talking about more than any other issue. And I think the reason is because we wish we could control it, but we can't. And even if we put something in, in the form, in the contract, people aren't going to obey it. And if they don't obey it, it's not enforceable. So the shortest way to, that's where we're going and to put this thing to bed is to leave parking off the issue. You know, off the, off the document and just put that out there, see what you think.
Okay, nip. And please, everyone, including myself, Rick Smith, start identifying yourself because people who listen on the phone can't see the name pop up on the screen when a person speaks. So Nip Tanner.
Nip Tanner. I think the right point to manage it is at the application. You know how many bedrooms are being offered and whether hosted or non-hosted, how many are going to be available for renters? And I think there's some reasonable guidelines between the amount of parking space that's needed versus the bedrooms that are available. And there are, I know from the conversation with Bill on a topic in another town, there are well-established guidelines that zoning people use when they're trying to figure out the ratio between activities and parking spaces. And so it would certainly, I would welcome his input in terms of what, what does he think makes sense and is consistent with the kinds of guidelines that are published for zoning activities relating the number of parking spaces to the activity, in this case bedrooms. Uh, I believe we have similar relationships embedded in our existing regulations for retail establishments, for restaurants, for home occupation businesses. You know, we say if you're, you occupy so many square feet or have so many chairs in the restaurant or whatever, you have to have a ratio of that in parking spaces. I, I, to me, this is completely related, simple, logical. Yeah, I, obviously I'm in a minority on that.
No, I'm not sure you are. Uh, I'm going to take both this language on the matrix and the June nineteen language and present it to him as this is the ball that we're wrestling with. And as a zoning enforcement officer, how would you suggest we could be effective in meeting those goals? The goals being congestion, not too many cars on a lot relative to the number of bedrooms. And I'll just brainstorm it with him. Is that comfortable with everybody? Blake?
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out one thing about what Nip brought up though is, you know, the regulations say how many parking spaces you have to have based on some other criteria. But it doesn't say anybody has to use them. And that's the real issue here. So that's why I would want to have the permit be very clear about what parking spaces the renters, short-term rental people have to use. Because if there are complaints from the neighbors or anybody else, they can't get by in the street or whatever, people are parking in front of their house, whatever the case may be, then the only enforcement we have is to revoke somebody's permit. And if they're in violation of the permit, we can do that, but we're not parking police. We can't have an ordinance that we're trying to govern. All we can control is it, whether or not they're abiding by their permission.
Okay, that may prove to be a weakness that we hear after we talk to Bill. We'll just have to see. Any other discussion on the parking issue? All right. Let's just take a two-minute break here so I can be consistent with the agenda and not forget this thing of new business that I forgot to describe. Since I'll be doing the minutes, it won't be a real problem. We'll get them right at that time. Uh, this was the application of Ryan Baller forty Elm Street for design review to build a twenty-five by thirty-eight foot three-car garage. It will be tentatively on the agenda for the November meeting as a matter of architectural design review. Questions? Thank you. Okay. Okay. All right. So would you like to go to that short matrix now, since we just spent a lot of time on one of the issues there and, and just finish that one and try and get it cleaned up? Okay, one of the things that was needed under the unruly behavior sections, we had voted to consolidate those in one item. I have done that in the next version that you see come out. It will just basically read as one stream, no objectional traffic congestion noise, et cetera, and no loud music or loud noises from nine to nine. And that's consistent with the motion we passed. Off-street parking we dealt with. I, I did mention that I, I kind of, I almost think we ought to deal with that as off-street parking is required, but I'll go with the flow and let's wait and see what we get from Bill after he's had a chance to think this over. We had said in our
Lynn Marshall. I, I think that is a good question to ask him, whether off-street parking is the only way you really can regulate that. I would like to hear his answer to that.
Okay, I will ask him that. Next item is liability for health, safety, fire and tax rules. We had talked about. Yeah, nevermind. That's going to be something that John Casey has to look at. So we really don't need to look at that right now. Does anybody else have any other question on this short term, uh, this short matrix, one-page matrix? Okay, seeing now, let's go to the long one.
I, I did have one.
Lynn?
And this may be something you want to deal with later.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry Lynn Marshall. I guess I must have kind of fallen asleep at, at the, one of the last motions. But, uh, separate rates for single-room rental operators versus multi-room and whole-house rental operators. And I thought that the way we were going was to change, update the rooming house and, which at some point we need to, to bring that in and have, and what kind of rules we would have with that. And I thought we were going in this direction, or maybe it was just I was suggesting that we limit that to two bedrooms max that have to be rented after the same party and the owner has to be present. But those, the separate, I think in that case, the separate rates would require to the people who were just renting their rooms, whether it be one or two versus the whole house rentals. So but it's, I, I would, I would just suggest at some point we, before we get into that, it's probably a good idea for us to update the rooming house. Cause I think we've decided we are going to blend it in to, to take it out the way, of the way it is in the regulations now and blend it into short-term rental. So at some point, let's do that.
Well, in the long matrix, there's more space allocated to deciding what we want to do in that circumstance. This particular issue that you raised, I, I'm looking now and I can't find it, but I thought that was your motion to simply segregate the fees.
It was, but I was, but I was saying it was the the, the single, the, the single, the single, the, the room, the, the rental operators are renting just rooms, whether that be one room or two rooms versus people who are renting apartments or whole houses, all, all living units, which will bring more money.
But on the fee issue, that was your point, that single rooms ought to have a lower fee than a whole house or an apartment.
Right. I guess, I guess, single-room rental operators, I guess that sounds like it's a single room. And then you say multi-room, it sounds, that would be two rooms. So that my intent was, you've got people who are renting one or two rooms. And then you've got people, the other categories, people who are renting apartments or whole houses with, with a whole apartment with cooking facilities and a whole living unit versus one or two rooms, bedrooms.
Could I make a suggestion, since I can't find it right now? When I send something like this out two weeks in advance as a staff draft for comment, could you get the comments to me earlier? So we don't all of a sudden sit here looking at ourselves.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So your issue mostly is going to be that whole section that you had proposed way back about individual room rentals. That's the bigger issue in your view, rather than the cost of monitoring and enforcement. Am I correct summarizing it that way?
Well, I, I was, I was saying, I think the, the place to start is to actually get that, because I don't know what we have really agreed to. It's not showing up anywhere. So have, have we agreed to that, that it would be the thing like, you know, the two bedrooms max to the same party, owners has to be present, no cooking facilities or kitchen privileges, no food served. That would be the new, that would be the replacement, I think, but I'm not sure where we are in terms of agreeing on that.
I don't even know what you were reading just now. Is that from your draft back a few months ago?
No, that was from what I remember.
Oh.
But that was, I have, I have submitted that in writing. And multiple times. That, that probably is in the proposal.
This reminds me why I wish we had dealt with the draft decision document way earlier than now, because I had all of your ideas in there that we could see. And by using these matrices, which people wanted to do, we've lost a lot of context on people's individual ideas.
Yeah.
Maybe at the end, we're going to have to go through.
Maybe we want to come back to that later. I was just saying before we go too far down the lane of, of monitoring enforcement.
Right, let's just not deal with it now then and, and make a note that we'll want to come back and revisit this. Okay, taking the five-page, four-page matrix. I only flagged the, the second item on the first page. Uh, I think that's it. Larry, there you go. Hang on a second. All right. Somebody's going to have to holler if they're waving their hands. And I can't see you. Because I can't see this whole thing and all of you to call on you when you wave your hand. I'll just have to leave it like that. All right. Waiting period was we had decided at the last meeting, do we take out any reference to the date of enactment of this rule and just say, short-term rentals prohibited until the owner has owned the house for three years. I only flagged that because that was kind of a, a new idea based on something John Casey had advised. But we did make a decision on that to just bring it to your attention that that's one that he's gonna, he said he's going to want to look at that again critically and, and think about it in terms of precedent and, and what's legally sustainable. So that's just an information point. Restrictions on use, page two, the top.
Larry, can you blow it up a little bit?
And move us up to page two, please? There you go. Restrictions on use. The Larry's individual plan had had this phrase here, use, use is not incidental to lodging or sleeping prohibited. Which was a pretty good way of saying it. And then we also say events are prohibited. So it's kind of holding up your trousers with a belt and suspenders. That's too big, just so you know. And while he's getting that into the right size, And while he's getting that into the right size, the other issue in that section was Lynn's idea that. Advertising and websites must have the permit number. I confess, I was a little. Wasn't sure why that needed to be there, and I wanted to give Lynn the opportunity to explain that and then see if the rest of you. Agree and think it's an idea to have it in there. When I think of somebody's website advertisement. I'm not sure what the permit number does. Unless it's simply, if there's no permit number, we know to look at that person as a potential operator without a permit. Is that, was that your logic? Sometimes the simplest solution is the best. The other way this is going to be enforced is if somebody doesn't have a permit. The neighbors aren't going to have been informed, which is embedded in the administrative measures we've talked about. And the first complaint we get. That somebody's operating without a permit because there was no notification, we'll know it that way too. But, you know, I, I don't know if you want to. What is, what are everybody else think about having this in the advertisement on websites? Okay, if in doubt, let's leave it in there, and, and if there's a, a problem down the road, we can always take it out, but if you put it in, you can't lose sight of it. Larry?
No, I, this is Larry, I, I agree is that in many. Circumstances, permit numbers or professional license statuses, you know, they're in there, so it's, it's a minor. Non-event, you know, when you're. When you're putting in the ad, so I think that's a good idea to the, to the point I think Lynn made. It's a quick search from any. Downstream enforcement. The search on the field for the permit number, if it's not there, that pops up immediately. I, I think that's an easy first. First round, we shouldn't have to wait for somebody to complain when they don't have a permit and they're actually. Out there selling stuff.
Okay, any disagreement with that? Seeing none, we'll put that in. How about the language just to the left of that, use is not incidental to lodging or sleeping prohibited? Any disagreement with that? Alright, add that. Okay, next one is, this gets down to the things you were talking about, Lynn, kitchen facilities and so forth. So these, this actually Lynn is your opportunity to. Discuss these things with a view toward leaving them into the proposal that we would send to John for review. Not that he will or will not have a, any concern with this, but as you say, it was something that was uniquely your idea. And so I want to give you the opportunity to be able to explain. Why you think that's a good idea.
Well, because, because we had decided to. I mean, the, the boarding, the, I mean, at the wedding house, the rooming house part of our regulations needs to be updated anyway. So you, the choice is, are you going to update that? Or are you going to blend it into the short-term rental regulations? And I thought we had decided on the latter. So if you do that, then you're just renting rooms, then you have to have these other restrictions. If you're providing food, then it's, then it's an air, then it's, it's a bed and breakfast. And there's a whole set of different regulations for that. So it wouldn't come under the short, wouldn't come under this, it, there's a whole bed and breakfast when you have to have, you know, when you're selling food. Are providing food at, they have a, they have different regulations. I, I don't know whether that's the state or how, how that's done, but. It certainly. In, in the rooming house, they make those, they, they have those specifications about the food, so that's why it's in here.
Okay, so if I understand your logic, we have to prohibit it here, or these things become bed and breakfast, which are regulated elsewhere. Anybody have a view on that, Larry?
Yeah, I think given the pace and speed we're doing this, if we try and fix those other segments. Bed and breakfast and, and other things, we'll never get through this, so. I, my view is get through short-term rental, which is a very specific definition. And then we can always follow on says, does this impact or change, when we do the legal review or when John, does that impact another element of zoning? I, I would not support trying to solve all these things in one addition.
I think that's, as Lynn pointed out, that's why we decided to fold them in here for that very reason. Alright, so we'll add that language in, any disagreement with that, Nip or Beth? No disagreement, Nip, Beth?
No, I was gonna, Nip Tanner, I was gonna speak in favor of it.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that concept. I agree it shouldn't be a bed and breakfast, but the, the problem I do have is in the larger matrix. It's under the heading of kitchen facilities. So, I mean, obviously, any rental, anything, if you have a short-term rental, you're renting the whole house or even a room. There's going to be kitchen facilities in the house. It's just an issue of not providing food, and I, maybe that needs to be titled differently. Excuse me.
Okay, I'll open the suggestion.
I would just say, no, you know.
No food.
Food is prohibited.
So no. No food preparation or no providing of food?
The host may not provide food to. Their short-term renters.
No, they're not, but I think, I think that that, I think there are requirements there that go back to the, the, well. This, this is the sa- the single-room rental, I think is under boarding houses, and I'm not sure. And the grotton, there, there, there's a whole big lengthy section on it, and it ties back to other regulations. And so that is that, that they don't, you don't provide kitchen facilities either. You're not allowed to, they're not allowed to use your kitchen or in either. It's not just the food, they can't use the kitchen. Don't ask me why, that's what it says.
How does this sound? Hosts may not provide meals to renters and may not provide food. Preparation. Areas. Does that make sense? Larry?
I, I would say food services. Cause the, you know, you said you do whole house rental, the facilities are there. So it's really, the intent is that the homeowner or the, the person doing it is not delivering a meal, right? It's not, it's not providing services.
End of what I said, yeah, the front end of what I said is that point, hosts may not provide meals to renters. But I was unclear whether. In Beth's language, whether. There's two things here, the host provides the meal or the renter does his own cooking. Do you want to prohibit both?
I think the regulations say you, before, before we decide, I think we need to be familiar with, if we're saying that they can. Do their own preparation of food in somebody's kitchen, I think that needs to be referred back to the regulations, because I don't think that's allowed. Under the single-room rentals, but if it comes under short-term rentals, maybe that changes the whole thing. That's going to be a John Casey question, I guess.
You know, it, think about, let's step back and take a deep breath here. A hosted rental. Is a house with a wing or a room or two, and the host lives there. And rents out the one or two rooms. Why would we care whether. They, and that's the classic Airbnb model, where the host is there. Why would we care whether the host gives them a meal or not? Even though it might be inconsistent with their older regulation, either of town or grotton, or even in knowing. Now we're dealing with short-term rentals, the way they exist now. So my question really is, why would we care? It, it, what's the problem is, that's created if, in a hosted rental. A couple of people are in a room and the owner is there and she says, come and have some eggs and ham with me. Is that a problem, Larry?
That's an Airbnb and they're, and because they're serving food, there are a whole different set of regulations, I, you know, yeah, it sounds nice, but. Can we do, I don't think we can do it.
Well, I, why can't we do it? Because some older regulation prohibits it. We should, should we done, change this regulation to say. Question is, do we make our short-term regulation, short-term rental regulation conform to an older rule elsewhere? Or whether we design what we think it ought to be now for 2021 circumstances? Rooming houses used to have a whole different connotation, I, I get you there. When we had shipyards in town, and there was a, all of these big houses and knowing, they probably had eight rooms in them. Where shipwrights stayed, and for whatever reason, they wrote the rule to say. You know, you're going to get your meals at Carson's or whatever served for it. That's not really the model we're talking about now, so I, I'm just being devil's advocate to say, why shouldn't bother. Larry, you've had your hand up, so you're going to answer my.
I, I think there's a difference between, I am selling you a meal and serving it to you for cash. Right, which is a restaurant versus, yeah, use my facilities or, hey, come on in, I'll give you some eggs and bacon, but you don't charge them. There's a health, you know, there's health ordinances and review, there's all kinds of things if you're in the food service business. That I think is the difference. I mean, I don't really care if they want to give stuff away. Right, or if they want to loan, you know, they can use the facilities to cook their own food, but once you start selling food. That's a whole different kettle of fish, so to speak.
And if the host providing the food. Is what makes it a bed and breakfast, Lynn's right, they are regulated differently, for example, I think they have sprinklers in their building and things like that.
A lot of things. I agree, that's the point.
Okay, other thoughts on this? So we're really talking about prohibiting food. Hosts may not provide meals to renters and may not provide food services. Is that language that captures what you've been saying? Any disagreement about that?
I'm just, I think the term food services is pretty broad, I'm not even sure what that means.
Well, is it food preparation or?
I mean, here, here's what I think Lynn is saying, and Lynn, you correct me if I'm wrong. If you're renting out a room, a single room. Then you're not allowed to use the kitchen. But if you're renting out a whole house, obviously you're getting, you can use the kitchen, but nobody serves you food. The owner, the short-term operator does not serve the food in either scenario. Is that what you're saying, Lynn?
Yes, I think so. I, and I'm going to suggest as a way to move forward. Is that we go ahead and, and. And with the more restrictive, we have, we've had this out there for a while, we haven't heard anybody say, oh no, don't do that. I, I want to serve food. It is always easy to relax this later. And, and I think it's, would take some digging to find out what we can and can't do. So my suggestion would be to go forward with the more restrictive. With the thought that if we see that, that there's a need to relieve, to be less restrictive later on, we can explore it later on. But let, let's try to keep moving forward.
Here's the devil in me again. If you're renting a single room, you can't use the kitchen, if you're renting a house, you can. How do we enforce that? Cause if there's a kitchen in both houses and the host who's there says, feel free to use my kitchen, we'll never know.
Of course you won't.
Yeah.
I mean, why don't we just say you can't serve food and leave it at that?
If you're renting a single room.
Or, or if you're renting the whole house, the, the operator, the short-term operator is not in the business of food service. I mean, we're, we're already allowing them to do one commercial activity, and on top of that, we're going to allow them to serve food too. I think this gets back to what Larry was saying, I mean, that, then they need to have a sprinkler system, and they need to have the health department checking on the food that they serve. And all of that, I mean, we're not in the business of, of opening more restaurants in town. This is about people being able to rent out a room or their house for overnight guests. That's what it's about, it's not about food, I thought.
So the short-term operator is prohibited from providing food to the renter. Everybody agree with that?
No. Okay, I mean, yes, that, that gets really weird. Because. I mean, how many places do you stay where. They do have some food in the refrigerator, or they have some spices or some, some flour or some, you know, some things you would use for cooking, so say no food. That's not the way it generally works.
Well, that's what I was saying before, food preparation opportunities. Was different than the food itself. If, if the person's renting an individual room, and you don't want them cooking food in there because it's a safety issue. That's something you should prohibit, but it'd be hard to enforce. If you don't want them even eating in there, taking out food and bringing it in. That's kind of a different question.
Well, nobody, nobody's saying they can't bring in food.
No, I'm just logically trying to go through the list of, of the way this would work. The last one is. You'd be telling the host they can't provide food, and I think that's what everybody's kind of agreeing with, that you don't want the host running a restaurant.
Meals, no, can't provide meals, it's not like there will not be any. You know, you go there and there're cookies in the cookie jar, I mean, that's kind of standard.
Yeah, Nip, you had your hand up patiently, thank you.
Yeah, I think Beth's suggestion is simple, it's to the point, it would get the job done. You know, and is, has been observed, we're not going to have any idea what's going on inside the four walls. No matter what we write about this, but if we simply make it clear that we don't want the, the operator to be. Providing food to the people.
Well.
That, that makes it simple, and may I finish, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, you know, the fact that they might leave some cookies or there're spices in the cabinet or whatever, that's very trivial. In comparison to what. The language that, that Beth suggested, so I, I endorse Beth's suggestion.
Okay, Beth's suggestion was, short-term rental operators prohibited from providing food to the renters, Lynn suggested say meals instead of food. I didn't get a sense whether Beth accepted that as a, an acceptable alternative. So I'm not sure which one, Nip, you're, you're saying you like.
I was good with what Beth said, but if the group wants the other one, that's okay too.
Okay, how does everybody else feel? Stop laughing, Nip. I know, we're all pondering at the same time, I can see everybody's face, and who is that, Blake that had, yeah, Blake?
Like, I, I think the intent is that they're not serving meals. So why don't you say, don't serve meals?
Okay, that's. Okay, that's two for meals, two for food, three actually meals. Three for meals, two for food. Huh?
Four for meals.
Meals. Okay, everybody's falling to meals. So let's do that. Meals, okay. Next item right below, short-term rental of apartments. Nip and Lynn had suggested that short-term renting of apartments be prohibited. And I think the logic, at least Lynn's, was to enhance the prospects for long-term rentals as arguably more beneficial in some way to the village. So how do you feel about that?
I thought we, I feel the same about it, but I thought we'd already voted the other way.
I don't recall that. So maybe that's an error of my recollection in this matrix. Somebody, anybody agree with Lynn that we had dealt with it? Yep. And then Dana.
I, I feel strongly that it's a good idea. Is, is, you've heard me say probably too many times, my goal is to preserve the residential character of the village primarily. And then once we figure out how to do that, we figure out what we do for zoning districts outside the village. And it really does make a difference whether the people who live next door to you are there long-term versus short-term. Just by accident, I had a conversation with a resident of the village on Sunday who commented on how while most, or there are several properties near hers that have long-term renters and they're people she's gotten to know and they've become part of the community that with the, in her words, explosion of short-term rentals starting last spring, it really has changed the character. And the, you know, they used to be in a position where virtually everybody walked by their house, they knew. Now there are groups of people walking by they've never seen before and they're not likely to see again. And, you know, she's very much in favor of long-term rentals. She's against short-term rentals. And the, the trade-off can easily be, what do we do with apartments? You know, where, where I live, there are probably within a couple of hundred feet of my house, somewhere between 10 and 12 apartments. Most of them, I think virtually all of them currently are occupied by long-term renters. And some of them, there's some turnover, people come and go year at a time. But in many cases, the people have been there for a long time. And we pass each other on the streets, say hello, we know each other's names. It's, we live very close to each other. That makes a big difference that those are long-term rentals as opposed to short-term rentals, in my opinion. And if we want to protect the residential quality of the village, we should restrict them to long-term rentals.
Okay, how do we define an apartment differently from a couple, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just trying to figure out how this would be done. How do we define an apartment compared to a couple of rooms in a a wing of, of a house in a hosted rental? Is it the absence of a kitchen? In the hosted rental versus the thing we just talked about, the kitchen and the food and an apartment has a kitchen and you can prepare your own food. Is that the big difference?
Also has a bathroom.
And a bathroom.
Well, the room owners have a bathroom too, so.
Yeah, you're going to share a bathroom or have a bathroom. Yeah. But the kitchen is the key thing. That's what I'm getting at.
It's one of the key things. I think, you know, little research, I suspect we'd find some language that differentiates between apartments and how rooms that are rented solo.
Okay. I'm hearing the squeals of anguish of people who own houses that have apartments that we tell them they can't do the same thing that somebody else can that doesn't have a kitchen in there. Not that I'm going to get run out of town by screams of anguish, but I mean anticipating. First, I'm trying to think, how would we justify that? And you've offered a fair justification. And then my question is, what's the counter argument? I mean, why would we tell an owner with an apart, a series of apartments in a building that we're deciding that you can't do short-term rentals because fill in the blank? We will need a good reason for something like that. Why we're telling somebody, no, you can't do it. Just so be thinking of that. Larry? And then, Larry, Dana was first. He was after Nip and then Dana.
Yeah, I understand all that Nip is saying, but I agree with you, Rick. The same justification. You've got to have a justification for not including those people who want to rent apartments. You know, if you really want to protect Noank, then you say you can't rent apartments and you can't rent houses. So it runs me the wrong way that you're, you're, you're singling out one group in favor of another and the justification used. And my other question was, you know, what exactly is an apartment? How you're, how are you going to define that? And I think I think we already did this last week or two weeks ago, four weeks ago, and I think we did decide that we weren't going to make that distinction.
Well, that's consistent with what Lynn had said. I'll have to go back and see if we had a motion on it. I just, I slipped a cog on that. I do not recall that. So maybe my fault. Doesn't mean we can't revisit it, but if we made a hard decision and then what we'd be doing now is changing the decision. Particularly if it was a vote, if it was a motion, we need another motion to change.
Maybe it was not a motion. Maybe it was just an informal decision. I'm not sure.
Okay. I'm not sure where that leaves me.
Well, why don't we hear Beth and Blake?
Oh, Beth too. Okay, Larry first, then Beth.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm confused because I agree with Dana. I thought we had a decision on this. And if the quest, the new question was, can an apartment owner, renter, sublease one of his, let's say it's a two-bedroom apartment, sublease that one of his bedrooms is a short-term rental. Restricting that, I thought was the discussion on the table. Not whether the homeowner who has an apartment couldn't use that apartment as a short-term rental. I, I think those are two different things. So one, I would agree with Dana that I don't know how to distinguish between them. I think it's, it's not a good position. The other one, I think we have a very good position on subs, basically a sublease. In fact.
Yeah, we in the past have, it didn't take very long to go past it, but we had no subletting essentially. All right. Well, I'm going to have to go back and review all sorts of a record to find out where we were. If Lynn is correct and there was no motion, then, you know, we can develop a consensus here and it might be different than we had. I'm sorry, Beth, you had your hand up patiently.
I would just say, I don't know how you, from an equal protection standpoint, that passes muster. I, I don't, I agree with Dana. I don't see how we can say to someone who owns a house and with an apartment in it that they can't do short-term rental, but if you just own a house, you can do short-term rental. So I'm not in favor of it.
That, Lynn?
Yeah. So answer to two questions. How do you define an apartment? Well, one thing you can talk about, it's a, you know, a dwelling unit in a multifamily building. So there's that. The other thing is like, how do you justify it? Well, you justify it the same way other places have. And that's saying because you have a shortage of, of, of rental stock. And so the apartments, you know, rent for less than a house generally and, and we, we don't have many here. So you, you're in essence, you're in essence eliminating, you know, potentially eliminating part of your population. And that's what's happened. So you, so you lose your young people, you, you lose people who don't have as much money. You lose elderly people from your, from your population. So it does change community character. And that could be expanded upon, but I'll stop there.
Yeah, Rick. I understand the point Lynn's making and there's making to some extent, but it's not necessarily the case at all. I mean, I can envision someone who has a apartment over the garage that they just want to use for overflow when extra family comes to visit. And they're not going to rent it long-term. They never have any intent to rent it long-term. But why wouldn't they be able to do a short-term rental here and there in between when they don't have family visiting? I don't see why we would necessarily be prohibiting that.
Right now, the, the way we've dealt with these matrix-based decisions is to say only one dwelling unit per property can be used. Only one rental party per building or per dwelling unit, the way the rules written. And I had a section in earlier that said accessory buildings could only be used if there were, and I think we even decided this authorized to be used as such by the town of Groton. In other words, if there were two legitimate dwelling units on the property, one of them was an accessory structure, but the town said you can have somebody live there. You could use one or the other, but you couldn't use both at the same time. That's where we were back the last couple of meetings as evidenced by, you can see right above where we're talking on this forum, number rentals per property at one time, one. And I think that carried over to the side. Which I can't see. Oh, actually, we never decided. It was very consistent in everybody's decision, but we do need to decide those. No, we decided those. It's, it's in that, I can't see the whole matrix and I can't see everybody's face anymore. But yeah, we decided one, number rentals per property at one time, one for the number of rentals per dwelling at one time. And one for the number of families per rental party arguably. Now, if you have an accessory building and you want to have your family bunk in there in August when they come for vacation, I don't think anybody's going to care, but if you want to do rentals in it, this language would prohibit that. So that's my view, Blake. Say again?
I don't follow how it prohibits it.
If we vote for what we have here on the paper, which is if you look at those three rows, that's the consensus we developed. It would be a rental per property at one time, a number of rentals per dwelling at one time. And one number of families per rental. So if you had a house and you were living in it and you wanted to rent a separate building, it would have to be off, you know, an approved dwelling unit by the town. But you couldn't do both of them at the same time. You'd have to do one.
Suggesting you would, but it would still be considered an apartment, right?
If the town of Groton or knowing fire district considered it a dwelling unit, yeah.
We would be wrong with renting that on a short-term.
I can't hear you, Blake.
Wrong with renting that on a short-term rental basis.
Nothing if it's, if you're talking about an approved dwelling as opposed to a shed with a bed. You know, which I've seen in knowing people have those and family stays as overflow. Nip?
Couple of comments. A shed with a bed is not an apartment. So, you know, if the, if the example that Blake is talking about is somebody's got a garage with a room over it and they have, you know, a bed up there. It seems to me that they, under the regulations that have been discussed up to this point, they could rent that out under the, you know, single room rental provisions that we have. So. Finish?
Wait, and I just finished. Bedroom with the.
May I finish?
Blake, Blake. Let him finish, please.
Beyond that, it seems to me over and over, when we get to a point in the road where there's a tough decision to be made, it's going to protect the residential character of the village. We opt for what's easy, what the property owner wants to maximize their use of the property. And there's almost no consideration being given to preserving the residential character.
Okay, Blake?
Well, just what I said before, that's not what I was suggesting. What I was suggesting in this hypothetical situation that we're debating was if you had an apartment on your property and you wanted to rent that out for short-term rental purposes only. You had never had an intent to rent it out as a full, as a long-term rental. You'd use it as overflow, use it whatever, but add a kitchen, add bedroom, everything that can, made it can qualify as an apartment like we're talking about. That's the example I'm talking about. So I don't see any reason why you would prohibit that.
Turnover.
I'm confused about that. What does turnover have to do with it? If it was, if it.
Short-term rental versus long-term rental?
That's, I'm, I'm hearing Blake saying you have a structure on your property that you've had family stay in and you decide to throw a few things into it. And then I'm assuming get approval to have, be used as a dwelling unit. It's got to have a bathroom and a kitchen. And able to rent it as a short-term rental. If it, if the rest of our regulations, like one rental per every two weeks and a number of days limit and so forth, if those are in a final rule, don't those things control the turnover? Not whether you have a backyard building that you've turned into a, you know, rental opportunity.
They limit the turnover, but it's still going to be a whole lot more than it would be if it were a long-term rental.
Okay, Lynn?
Yeah, I, I think it, you know, in terms of, of what Blake is saying, you know, whether it's a, this is a room rented or whether it's an apartment rented, I mean, there still has to be a legal, a legal dwelling area. And because that's one thing that the zoning has been concerned about is, is that these be, every accessory building can't be a dwelling unit. And those are prohibited. And so, so it already has to be illegal when you're not going to get permission to make it legal because it, because it isn't. So it, it already has to be illegal and that's number one. Number two, then we still have the goal of not displacing, you know, rental people. And there's more, more than one way to do that. So one is you ban the apartments. The commission's not going in that direction. But what the commission has been going in the direction of is not allowing a ton of short-term rentals to be taking place. Cause after all, every house is being allowed to do it, potentially do it. So that, so it's more restrictive then for each, for each dwelling. So everybody gets a, everybody gets a shot at it. So there, right now, there, there, the restrictions on turnover. If it's right now, it's one party can be in there for every two-week period of time. Divide the calendar out and there it is, and one person. And with a limit of 45 days per year. That just may not make this, the short-term rentals a lot more highly desirable financially than a long-term rental. So then it is up to the owner to do what, to, to do that however they want. So if, in the case that Blake was talking about, where someone generally keeps it free for family, but then during other times would like to use it for a short-term rental, they, they still could do that, but it's not going to be a really excessive all the time, commercial business happening all the time because of the other restrictions. So it all has to fit together as a. So it all has to fit together as a package.
Anybody else? Dana?
You know, Oviet, by, by limiting short-term rentals to only those with whole houses, you're making sacrificial lambs out of people who have apartments and want to rent short-term rentals. You know, if you really want to restrict, and I get Nip's argument completely, and I agree with him completely. But the problem is my sense of fairness, it's really been out of shape when you allow, and we have, when we have allowed whole houses to rent, but you know, those people have smaller homes that want to rent. You know, apartments have apartments, can't rent. I just don't see how you justify that. And it's just, it, it bends the fairness rule somehow, um, in my mind.
Okay, anybody else? Beth?
One last comment from me. I think Lynn made a good point. I mean, if, if we've already, I think voted that the people are going to be able to do short-term rentals for a maximum of forty-five days. So then a, a property owner is going to have to weigh it. Do I want to have forty-five days of short-term rental or is it more advantageous financially for me to have a, you know, twelve-month rental? And I would tend to think that a lot of, uh, a lot of landlords would say I'd rather have the consistency of twelve months when not knowing, you know, maybe I get a max of forty-five days, but I, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to rent it out for every single one of those days.
Okay, anybody else? Hey, I'm, my view is the equal protection argument always persuades me. And, and I think Dana has said it with a little more passion. Beth had the, the legal interpretation. I'm hard pressed to figure out why we tell the owner of one kind of structure that they can do something and the other one can't. So I'm leaning against having this in there. But I'm, you know, I'm close to that middle of the road where another good argument makes me go the other way. And I don't hear a motion and we're not going to make final decisions tonight anyway. So perhaps leave it there and let me go back and look at the record and see what we had to say in the past about it. Nothing says we can't take it out at a later date. Does that make people comfortable or would you rather be more decisive tonight? Dana?
For safety sake, we better go back and look at what we actually did previously.
All right. Okay, let's, uh, hold a decision then for a future date and what we decided and why. If I can make good sense of that and why. All right. Next item Larry, uh, scroll to the bottom of that page. Make sure we don't miss anything. It would be on the next, top of the next page, please. Okay, this one is kind of a, I think we can hold this to the end. This is what we're going to say about what we're going to provide to renters. And we have a lot of good ideas in those various cells. I'm bound and determined, I'm going to one of these days get the draft decision document in front of you. Then you can read how a regulation would say, these are all the things and they're listed sequentially and you don't have to try and summarize for a matrix, but, uh, it's not something we actually have to decide tonight. Uh, down at the bottom of the page is one that we ought to. Uh, before that Larry, little bit before, no, uh, back up a little more. Bottom of that page. Next item, there you go. The permit transferability. We have said, permit transfers prohibited, except for family transfers, which was how a lot of these cells looked. But we did not define that term. So, you know, I think we ought to talk about that a little bit. Anybody have a view or I'll start out and plant seeds? Okay, I, I would say we ought to make it linear, uh, grandparents to, you know, parents to children, grandparents to grandchildren, and limited at that. In other words, a family succession would be allowed for a transfer and, and it, it actually, it may be a moot point because the only provision that really was an issue here was the moratorium when it was based on the date of enactment. Because if you didn't have a family transfer in there and, and the permit was transferred to a family member and you didn't say anything else, then they would have to wait three years. Now, having taken that date of enactment part out of that, it's much more legally defensible. And it's just basically the moratorium, actually the waiting period is how I've characterized it is three years from the date of purchase, you'd have to hold off. And as Lynn pointed out, you could still do long-term rentals, but couldn't do short-term rentals and date of enactment has nothing to do with it. If that's the case, I'm not sure this permit transferability needs to have a caveat for family transfers. Maybe it just needs to say permits are not transferable. So that's seeding the debate. S E E D I N G, not C E D I N G for those literalists among us. So anybody have comments on that? Beth?
Since we're not going to limit the number of permits, what's, how hard is it for somebody to go down and get a permit if the property transfers between father to son or, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like it's necessary because it's really not going to be a hardship to go down and get the permit.
I'd have to go back and look at this one a little bit in the larger view, uh, because I may have just misspoken. Maybe it's that family transfer is required because if it changes hands, if by changing hands from a father to a son means you have to start the three-year clock again. I don't think you want to do that. So that's why a family member, children or grandchildren, uh, should be exempt because if it really hasn't changed hands as if it was a regular old property transaction.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for bringing that out. So I could clear it up, Nip.
I, I think under that logic, the exception is not in this section, but under the, you know, it's a three-year waiting period. You waive the three-year waiting period if it's, if you want to do this, if it's a transfer within a family.
All right, I'll take a look at that. Maybe it's just a placement improvement. Uh, Beth?
And if I could just, um, say, I know you were talking about like, uh, linear transfer. I'm not in favor of that. I think that, you know, if it transfers among family, it transfers among family. Some people don't have children. Maybe their parents are dead. Maybe when they pass away, they're leaving the property to a sibling. May I, from a, from a, you know, it's almost discriminatory to say, these are the only family members that we're going to recognize in this exception. So I would ask everyone to consider that when they're thinking about how they want to structure.
Good point. How do you, how then do you define family members? Uh, second cousin, fourth removed, to be humorous about it for a minute. I mean, it, it's, how far afield do we go from? You make a good point about linear transfers, which I hadn't thought about. But how far afield do you go?
I don't, I don't know. I haven't thought that far out, but I mean, quite frankly, to me, if, if you're passing it, you know, to a relative, if, if they're your second cousin. Okay, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that.
How do you even prove that? I wonder. I mean, I have documents probably about my siblings, grandparents and so forth, but if somebody said, prove to me, you're not just trying to get out from under the burden of this measure by saying he's your second cousin, how, how would we even prove that or disprove it?
I don't know. I, I guess I would have to think more about it, to be honest with you. I don't know.
Cause if, if it's the waiting period issue and this is something that is such a flaw that we can't get past it, we have a major problem because the waiting period is a key issue to what every one of you said you wanted to avoid, which was the so-called transitioning into uh, distant ownership of, uh, properties for the sole purpose of short-term renting. I mean, talk about the loss of community, the values that Nip and Lynn have talked about. Uh, that's what everybody was concerned about. The waiting period was a way for everyone to have an equal measure imposed to, to avoid that very problem. So if somebody can get by it by saying, that's my cousin, what do we do?
I'm not advocating this, but I'm just thinking out loud. So like in the laws of intestacy, you know, if you have, um, a spouse, it would go to your spouse. If you don't have a spouse, but you have children, it goes to your children. If you don't have spouse or children, it would be your parents and then it would be siblings and then it would be the next level. So I mean, I, I don't know how that works into this equation, but that's kind of how it works under you know, in, in, under estate planning. The other way.
Go ahead.
The, the other way is just when we talk about like an arms-length transaction. So if I sell the property in an arms-length transaction, I mean, somebody's paying for it. As opposed to if there's no consideration, maybe that's the defining issue. Because let's say, what if I have a property in my own name, but I decide that I want to put it into a trust, I retitle it. I mean, really, I'm still the owner, but now my trust owns it and I'm the trustee of my trust or I put it into an LLC. Well, I'm still a member of the LLC. Does that start the clock? Reticking? You know, so maybe it's the arms-length transaction that's the distinguishing qualification. I don't know.
Okay, what do we want to accomplish with this thing? We, this, this whole transferability with family consideration came about because some people way back in June of two thousand nineteen said, and this is again, when we were talking about other types of management measures, but, um, they were concerned that the family home couldn't transferred down to someone else in the family. Yet, the commission has been pretty clear that they don't want that so-called distant ownership, corporate ownership, if you want to use that type of term, uh, to become just rental properties that are managed, owned and managed just for that purpose. So how do we strengthen this Lynn?
Yeah, I, you know, I hear the point that Beth is making and, and you know, there are all these exceptions where if you're, you know, like someone doesn't have children, but maybe they've got a niece. You know, that, that is very close and they're, you know, there's, they're always going to be, there are always going to be exceptions where it's not going to seem quite fair. But on the other hand, if, as you were saying, you know, how do you, how do you demonstrate if somebody's, you know, a second cousin once removed or something? Then that, that can be getting pretty far out. And the idea was that in transferring, they're trying to hold on to a family home. Well, that's, you're also allowing, um, by having a very distant relative, you're allowing s- some of those will be looking at it just for commercial value, not to try to hold on to a family home. So I think, I think we need to be, uh, e- even though I, I thi- I think we err on the, as, as Nip had said earlier, I think sometimes we're err on the part of being so inclusive that we can, that we can do damage, uh, trying to be so fair and bending over backwards. So I think this is just kind of a nice exception that you, you give to some people and not everybody will qualify. And it may not always make the best sense and, and sometimes it'll, it might be a, you know, a little sad or something, but it's just opening it up too much, I think has, has too many associated problems with it. So I think it needs to be fairly strict, maybe a little looser than this, but, but somewhere we have to set that, we have to set a strict limit, I think.
Okay, let, uh, let me follow on that comment with, with a couple of points that, uh, came up here and there earlier. This does not prevent the transfer of the property from a family member to even a distant cousin. It just says that if you're not one of those close, uh, relations, you have to wait three years before you can do short-term rental. And you pointed out at the last meeting, doesn't mean you can't do long-term rentals. So you can buy the, the house from your second cousin. You can do long-term rentals for three years. But then, at the end of the three years, you can do short-term rentals if you so choose. So it's not a blanket prohibition on the transfer of the property between distant relatives. It's just this particular use. We've proposed that mechanism to avoid the larger concern, which is the uh, buy a house for purposes of, right at the outset, doing short-term rentals. People have felt that's a troubling aspect for knowing. So uh, we're sort of on the same wavelength, but without the detail identified. Does anybody have a suggestion in Lynn's words to maybe liberalize this definition a little bit, which I can't, oh, I can, okay. For family transfers, I had said parent to children, grandparent to grandchildren. Anybody want to, uh, revise that? Uh, Dana?
Yeah. Dana, can you hear me?
Yeah, it's a little sing-song.
Um, to put this in uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, so to put this into perspective, I think I was the one who suggested that, um, that this transfer, the, the transferability idea, but the transferability idea was part and parcel of a limited permit idea, which would have limited, uh, as you recall, permits to only forty people to be dwindled down to thirty people. And so I was trying to limit people, but and yet, um, give the benefit of the doubt and the balance to those people whose houses had been in the family for a long, long time. But now that we've opened it up so that anybody can rent and that there can be, and anybody can be a short-term operator and they're going to be forty-five days and so forth and so on. Um, I don't see the point, um, in having any kind of, uh, permit transferability at all because we've opened it up so much.
Well, the, the point is the so-called. so-called corporate ownership issue that the commission had been concerned, didn't have anything to do with permit transferability. It was to try and keep people from incentivizing the opportunity for people to come in, buy a house and start short-term renting right away. Commission felt that was, you know, not a good idea for Noank. So that's the reason for it. It's no longer has anything to do with limited permits. It has to do with that issue.
So as I understand it, by, by having some sort of permit transferability, you weaken whatever moratorium you have, you will have agreed upon. Is, am I catching that correctly?
I don't think so. I wasn't talking about it in that context at all. I was talking about the so-called corporate ownership thing.
But the three-year moratorium is supposed to, is the only thing we've got to protect us against corporate ownership.
Well, no, the forty-five days and the one rental per every two weeks. All of those are disincentives to somebody wanting to buy a house in Noank for the sole purpose of renting all the time. Short-term renting all the time, which as we've kind of agreed, that's a hotel. So you know, if you look at this at, at the, the vast extremes to exaggerate, to make the point, if you can rent every three days throughout the year, there's a lot of incentive for somebody to want to buy a house to do it, but it is a hotel without a hotel staff on board, on site. Again, that's exaggerating for effect, but all those three measures I just talked about are intended to provide some opportunity for some short-term renting without incentivizing people to want to come and do that with a newly bought home and only that. Dana, Nip and then Beth?
But to Dana's point, with unlimited opportunities for people to operate, if people, for whatever reason, decide that that's okay, I mean, they're they want to be someplace else and they went around, rent out their house and whatever, and with unlimited opportunities, each house in Noank could have three or four neighbors next door, across the street, over the backyard fence, et cetera, operating short-term rentals. And certainly, under your description, none of them are going to be operating full-time. But if there's enough of them and they're all operating part-time, somebody's going to be living in a completely different environment than they would be if all of those houses were occupied by people who lived there and didn't rent them out. You know, you guys talk about this in the abstract as if there's, you know, these limitations are only going to apply to one neighbor of somebody. But, you know, in the village, we all have multiple neighbors who impact on our quality of life in terms of how they behave, what they do, the amount of turnover, the traffic, et cetera. And with, you're allowing every one of those neighbors to operate, even though they only allowed to do it a limited number of times, the character of that neighborhood is going to be very different if multiple neighbors take advantage of this free, free fall, that, free form that you're heading toward. I, I go back, I agreed with Dana from day one. We need to limit the number to protect the neighborhoods.
Anybody else? Yeah?
I just think, I mean, I, I like the whole concept of, you know, the the family passed down. I do worry though, that from an equal protection standpoint, it's not necessarily justifiable unless you're talking about, unless you delineated on a, on a, on a basis of whether or not there's a transfer for fair market value or not. I, because again, what if I want to transfer my property to an LLC? Do I lose the ability then to, to do a short-term rental? What, what if I, you know, I die and without children and my niece gets the property? Does she lose the ability? I mean, so maybe Dana's right and I'm not, I guess I need to think about it more, but maybe Dana's right in the sense that there should be no exception. I, I don't know. I like the idea of an exception. I'm just having a hard time finding out how it's equally applied across the board because it's not going to be. And then does that make us run afoul of some legal problem down the road?
Yeah, which makes me want to ask us all, what do, what do each of us want to accomplish with this and then figure out what the measure should be? It has morphed a little bit, as Dana has pointed out, from limited permits to the waiting period. Alright, we're almost running out of time. Lynn?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I, I, I think Dana made a good point about where this came from. And and, and then Beth was talking about keeping it equal for everyone and having to justify it. I'm alright if we take this out.
Well, okay. Anybody else? I'm, I'm not okay with taking it out. I'm okay with somewhat changing, you know, how we define people and I, and I am intrigued by what Beth has said because you know, if there's a legal distinction that's already embedded in the law that says if you become a corporation, put the house in corporate ownership, it's still your house. The law may have precedent that says that. And the law also may say, if you put it in a corporation, you're a different owner than you were before. I don't know the answer to that. All I know is what we were in, when we got to this point in this matrix, we were dealing with, the only thing left in here to deal with after the permit trans, limitations were out was the waiting periods. Everything else, it didn't matter because there, there was no other limited issue in there. The waiting period was a limitation with a time period on it. Beth?
I will just say though, I mean, if you're in, if you are an LLC, the law sees you as a separate entity. It doesn't see you as yourself, but let's, let's be honest. It's still you living in the house. So I don't know how we make that distinction. I guess that's, that's more what I was trying to say. But on that, I would make a, you know, pretty soon make a motion to go because I'm just like.
Well, yeah, I mean, this may be a good breaking point. Lynn?
Well, we haven't really decided whether, have we decided yet whether we're going to allow corporate ownership? So we say one, one, one per person, then, and we allow corporate ownership. There's an administrative burden with having to look inside on an annual basis, the LLC, to see who the owners are. And that's a pretty big burden. And it's a business entity.
Okay, I don't think we're going to resolve this one tonight. I think this is one that we need to think about a little bit more. I already said I'm going to go back and look at the record and see what else we had said. I may have to listen to a couple of past meetings of, of this to see. It's nine o'clock and I don't think we're going to resolve it. I don't know that there's a point of going on to, there's only one other page, but it's got five issues on it. Not going to go that long, so I would suggest we adjourn. Anybody agree with that?
Question of the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Nip has pointed out the next meeting we had called out was the election night. And Nip, I, I initially was not persuaded by your argument because I figured, you know, it's going to take days to call the thing. And if we're an hour into the pollsters and the pundits talking on the night of the third, we can always catch up. But Beth made a good point that people getting out of work late, intending to vote after work and maybe encountering long lines could be a problem. And, and while I think we can always catch up on what the pundits say, I always want to make sure that people have an opportunity to vote. So I was persuaded by her argument and I would suggest we do it the next night, the meeting the next night. November fourth, it's a Wednesday, since it's Zoom, we don't have to worry about reserving a room. So does anybody have a concern with that? Postponing to the next night? I see none. So let's call it November fourth. I see Amy, but it's not a public meeting, so the public does not speak.
Able to make a two-minute brief comment?
No, you're not. There is no rule that allows that unless it's at the beginning of the meeting on a subject not on the agenda. So I'm sorry, but no. Okay. So next meeting will be November fourth. The meeting after that would be almost two weeks later, which is our regular meeting date, which would be November seventeenth. So just keep those on your calendar and we'll make the adjustment in the Zoom schedule and proceed that way. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved by Beth. Is there a second Blake? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you all. All meetings are stressful, but I appreciate your contributions very much. We'll see you the next time.